Trustees Cawthon.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
O'Brien Bergman.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Whelan, absent. Zappa.
Here.
President Larson.
Here. Okay. In your packets are the minutes from the last board meeting, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
I will move that we approve the meetings of Tuesday, June 3, 2008.
I'll second.
Are there any corrections or changes? Ah, Whelan's here. Let the record reflect that trustee Whelan is present. All right, seeing then, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Are there any comments from the floor related to items which are not on the agenda? Okay. Moving on, amended conditional use permit for Fred Martin, 553 Galahad Road. I did just want to point out one thing for the record. This is the agenda that we send to the paper. The paper, since this is a free posting, agendas are free, they have the right to condense them. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, generally they don't, they pretty much go with what we have. So I was informed today that the agenda that was in the paper was, some of these were condensed. So, all right. Nor did they send us a copy, so we weren't aware that it was condensed. So that's why the two conditional use permits were just described as conditional use permits, which is apparently their prerogative.
Your full agenda was on the back wall at TomTom.
Was it?
We did post it after we found out that it had been condensed, then we went through and posted.
Good, yeah, all right. Amended conditional use permit for Fred Martin, 533 Galahad Road for the construction of a new stairway to the St. Croix River. The planning commission, I believe, has recommended approval of this. Is a representative from Mr. Martin here? Or is Mr. Martin here?
Yep, Tim Johnson with Selfie Design. I'm representing the owner, Mr. Fred Martin.
And the reason for the putting in steps or doing landscaping normally does not require a conditional use permit. Obviously, in this case, it does because you're dealing with water which is on the St. Croix, which is a protected area. Are you familiar with NR 118?
Yes.
Okay. In what context and what experience?
Well, through the planning commission, we've kind of discussed the, as far as the stairway and what we can do with grading and the amount of steps and how we have to conform to the width of the steps, the rise or height of the steps, as well as the distance in between the actual treads or the landings. At the last meeting with the planning commission, there was a little bit of confusion in the sense of, is it 20 feet minimum or is it 20 feet maximum? And we just discussed that, they would work that out with Brian or we'd work that out with Brian, and we just conformed to what his regulations or the way he viewed that reading there.
The landings, are there landings proposed?
Yes, the plan shows a certain amount of landings that we would set in between the actual steps. We've conformed to the size of the landings as far as not exceeding the distance that they want there. What we just need to work out with the Brian Wirt is the distance between the landings, whether it's not to exceed 20 feet or to be at least 20 feet apart from each other, is the piece that we came out of last meeting with the planning commission.
Okay. So you don't have any concerns with respect to compliance with NR 118?
No, no. And the concerns from Brian's letter of recommendation or what we needed, you know, we discussed all that at the planning commission, and we've got no issues with working with him to get to that point, as well as the engineer that I spoke with, I believe Kevin.
Kevin Oyam.
Yep, we talked with him, and as far as the engineering with the retaining walls, that's a standard practice that we have, which we would get the engineering once we knew the direction of, obviously, this meeting and then moving forward with our project. And obviously, the permits that we need to pull from you folks as well.
Is there anyone here from the planning commission? All right, so if we were to look at the planning commission's motion, for purposes of discussion, I'll initiate the motion. I'll move to recommend approval of the conditional use permit to Fred Martin of 553 Galahad Road for the construction of a new stairway leading to St. Croix River. Approval is contingent upon compliance with Brian Wirt's memo of June 4, 2008. The email memo from Kerry Stoltz of the DNR dated June 11, 2008. The email from Kevin Oyam, Cedar Corporation dated June 11, 2008. And all NR 118 regulations.
I'll second that. Larry, one of the sentences that stood out for me was the last one on the first page of the planning commission meeting minutes of June 18, in which it stated, "The building inspector would be responsible for ensuring that the stairway meets all the requirements of NR 118."
Sure.
And I just want to make that clear, that Brian will be watching to make sure, and he's the one who's responsible for ensuring it meets all those requirements.
Okay, are there any comments, questions, concerns? There didn't seem to be many from the planning commission, other than just making sure it complied with NR 118, and that's really the role that the building inspector plays. All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item is the conditional use permit, Dean Hanson, Lot 105 Summers Landing. Sixth addition to operate a grocery store approval is requested. Certainly not a new item. Just to pick up kind of where we left off last week, I did contact the DOT to see if they were prepared to entertain further discussions regarding, you know, granting an additional access off Highway 35. And without going into lots of boring details, the answer is no, they're really not. They still feel it's a safety issue, as they stated in the original letter. I think, and anyone can disagree with that, but, you know, it's certainly within their prerogatives. So they are not. Now, I don't know that that necessarily precludes us in the future from approaching them on this particular issue, just like it doesn't preclude us from approaching them regarding any issues that they might, on any topic that they might have denied in the past, so. So what we have right now is a conditional use permit request, which has been recommended by the planning commission. I gotta find where we were. Recommended by the planning commission, with a whole variety of contingencies. And we used that as our basis for discussion last month. Where are they? And then at our meeting, at our last board meeting, we also added a few more that at the time Dean agreed to, which he's now nodding in conference. I'm just gonna separate that. So in terms of where we were last month, 18 was already, I believe, on there, but it's not already stated, the trees would be donated to the property owners on the north side.
We added the word angled in number six.
Oh yes, in item number, in item number six, it's important to look at the recommended conditional use permit as it was recommended by the planning commission. In item number six, it originally said approximately 114, it said 114 90-degree parking spaces. That was changed to approximately 114 angled parking spaces, because the assumption was that they would lose a couple. And then after the word approved in that same line struck the words, "With the possibility of angle parking to be looked at by the village board," since that's now been incorporated. And then the next line, which was really an internal note, take that out as well. Going down then to the bottom of the page. Item number 19 said to include, would also include, "The infrastructure and traffic items identified in the TIA study from Cedar Corporation as presented." Number 20 would be the base and surface would be included in the infrastructure. The expansion and rebuilding of that. In the future, the owner of the development would pay 50% of the cost of replacing the road at some point in the future, and the balance of 50, of the remaining 50% would then be divided between the village and the property owners. And it would also be the fire chief's report from November
28.
28, 2007, would become a part of the developer's agreement.
I had another one here, reimbursed for the TIA study.
Yes.
Do you want to call that 21?
Well, the, the should be 22.
21 was the
What we, what we had previously approved is that if the, if the conditional use permit was approved, then we would be reimbursed. Okay? So we would be redundant, but we could put it in.
Just want to make sure it's covered.
There's no doubt. Okay. So we would do that. Number 18, 18 dealt with the trees, would be donated to property owners on the north side.
It was to be all property, it was, the property was on the west side also. That is included in the already, it was in addition to those?
Yes. Yeah, that was not the only, that was not the only condition related to trees.
Item number, just for the record then, Larry, maybe you ought to read number two.
Yeah, I was just looking, I, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah.
"One row of nine-foot to 10-foot trees will be planted along property lines by developer with a lifetime replacement guarantee."
That wasn't the same thing, though.
Okay, hang on.
That was on their property. This was supposed to be on the homeowner's property. And it was supposed to be on the north side and the west side.
Oh yeah, number 14.
"Developer will work with adjacent neighbors and donate up to eight trees, being six feet tall, to each neighbor, as well as plant them at the neighbor's direction. Property owners will become liable for all future maintenance of the donated trees." I think that dealt with your issue.
We think the reason that number 18 was added was because the north side, the, those residences were not directly adjacent to the property.
All right, so then I'm assuming that that language should say, would donate up to the same number of trees? I mean, it just says, "Trees donated to property owners on the north side." That, that's kind of unclear. So that would say then that, just to clarify that, the developer would donate up to, up to eight trees, being six feet tall, to each neighbor on the north side of the proposed
Specific use of
Screening.
As planned, you know, to each neighbor as well, and plant them at the neighbor's direction. So it's sound. For the purpose of obstructing lighting, car lights, traffic lights. Okay? Item number 19, I just want to make sure the board is clear as to what that implies. It says, "Include the infrastructure/traffic items identified in the TIA study from Cedar as presented." Okay? So then you have to take a look at the recommendation. Which is on page two, okay? "Which was to upgrade station lane to a WISDOT Type B modified intersection, including an exclusive right turn lane on the west approach, which basically says makes station lane wider as you come out of it. Construct an exclusive right turn lane from the north into station lane that you're coming off Highway 35. Improve the south approach on Highway 35 to include an exclusive left turn lane with geometrics conforming to WISDOT facilities development manual." Kevin, what were you envisioning with that item?
Basically, from, on the south, south approach, you would have to have an isolated left turn lane, that's on Highway 35. That would have to be constructed for the turns into station lane.
Left turn from south into
I'm having difficulty seeing that.
35 going north.
35 going north, basically on the south approach of that intersection is what it is.
You're coming from downtown, you're going north, you want to take a left.
Yep, want to take a left-hand turn lane onto station lane, there would be an isolated left turn lane for those movements, is what it is.
How would that be constructed at the intersection?
That, that intersection would have to be widened out.
Hold on.
Typically, the lanes are 10 to 12 feet wide, and there's going to have to be some improvements along the, the north approach, coming from the north to the south, there's an isolated right turn lane.
Yep.
So there's going to have to be some widening on that side too, so
Yeah, that was clear.
So ultimately, you're going to end up with, by constructing the, on the south approach, the left lane turning into station lane, there's going to be another driving lane to the north that's going to be added, just because you have to line up the lanes coming from the north and going up to the, from the south. So you'll see an isolated left turn lane more than likely onto Cradley Lane at the same time to line up the
Okay, so that whole intersection then gets widened.
Yep.
Will that widening go to the east then?
We envision that it would be to the west, just because, you know, you've got the bank, you've already got a right turn lane constructed into Cradley Lane. There's a lot of right-of-way to work with on the west side. You know, there's some underground storm sewer and stuff on the east side, just, we just feel it'd make more sense to widen it out on the west, west side. You have more room to work with there.
So then, if I'm visioning this right, the lane proceeding to the north will be straight, just as it is right now. The roadway will shift slightly to the west.
To the west.
So it will actually create a left turn lane.
Yep.
Coming south, the lanes or the traffic will actually shift slightly to the west one lane.
Yep.
Is there a description or is this depicted anywhere in this material?
I guess we didn't come out with like a specific layout. If this was, you know, approved, it would have to be taken to the next step. Somebody would have to go through and do a bunch of the field work, come up with the design, come up with the proposed grades, and then, you know, potentially, there is some construction that's slated for that section of roadway this year. Maybe it could be, some of that work could be changed or entered into that contract. It's all going to be time dependent, so.
But as long as we approve it in compliance with the DOT requirements and are assured that those are complied with.
Yep. And ultimately, and ultimately, you know, after the design has come forth, it would have to be approved by the DOT. I mean, you would have to send that off and they would have to sign off on it, so, before it's constructed.
Utilities as well, obviously. Is there power lines and everything?
Yeah, I, there, there might be some conflict with some of the power poles and things. Till you do all the field work and actually come up with the design, you're not gonna, you know, you're not going to know what you're up against there, so. So this is, you know, just, you know, what you would need to do geometrically wise, you would still have to do all the design work for the intersection per se. And there was some discussions about, you know, the underground conduits. I think Dean at the last meeting was looking at, as part of the developer's agreement, there could be some language in there. You know, if, once that, once the traffic signals are put in, he would cover those costs at that time.
That's really an either-or timing-wise, is it not?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be directional bore under the road anyways.
But I mean, as far as doing it, do you envision that intersection being totally torn up during the, during the construction process to the point where you wouldn't have the directional bore and then you could just
No, I don't, I don't think you would see an open cut application up there just because of the traffic and the detours and things. Either way, it would have to be an underground directional bore for, for the conduits, just because of the traffic that's going through there and the detour routes.
What you're saying is whether it happens now or whether it's just a part of the developer's agreement says in the future.
Right.
There's no doubt as to who would pay for it.
Correct.
Are you aware of any potential changes in 35?
Nothing that I'm aware of, I mean, for like any bypass or any of those types of things.
Well, I mean, I called the DOT and asked the same question, I'm just wondering, and I got one response, I was curious, which was no.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard anything that's been slated for that. The only thing is, is just that, you know, the maintenance thing that they're going to be doing this, this summer, you know, basically milling and overlaying the existing base that you have out there, just a maintenance type item.
Do you indicate to you how far they're going to go with that, milling overlay? And those are related to the project?
Start from Summer Street, and I believe it's going like six or seven miles to the north, out into the township.
All right, and then construct the sidewalk or trail system on Station Lane from 35 to the supermarket. Which side, where would you see that, I'll just call it sidewalk, where would you see that sidewalk going?
Think, you know, you do have the crosswalk along the north side of that intersection. I think it, you know, another crosswalk would have to come from the north to the south along Station Lane, and then that sidewalk would be constructed, the way I see it, right over to the grocery store from there. The way I envision it.
Could you clarify that again?
So that would run down, that would follow the, the that sidewalk would run down to follow the right-of-way?
Yes, south side of Station Lane, into the, into the grocery store.
It'd be on the south side, so it'd be on the development side.
Because you're going to want to cross the pedestrians at a controlled intersection, so, you know, you already have the crosswalk along the north side of that.
Right.
So I, you'd ultimately have to have another one there to get them, you know, on the south side of the road over to the, to the grocery store.
I mean, I'm thinking of where the current street is. Where would the sidewalk start? Right, right near the road, obviously, but, on the south side, following along the development down to the driveway and for entrance.
Right. Yep, there have to be some accommodations for that, for the pedestrians.
Not be on the north side.
You would
To the extent that there is remaining right-of-way or the Higgins property is next, the sidewalk is not on that side.
I don't envision, yeah, I don't, I don't see that as, that as being a viable option.
I mean, I wouldn't think so either. All right. Would I be correct in assuming that you probably anticipated most of these infrastructures?
I, I don't, because by the concept that Bill we gave into the drawings, I, we don't all understand exactly what they're talking about.
But conceptually, we understand them. I mean, if I do, anybody should. Okay. All right.
Answer your question more honestly. I don't understand what a left turn lane is going to work for.
Road's going to do this. As you're, if you're coming down from the north, it's going to do this.
I understand, yeah.
Now with respect to those, we had a note that said, "Include the infrastructure and traffic items identified in the TIA study from Cedar as presented." Now what, what I just heard was, with respect to bullet well, item, bullets one, two, and three, those would be done now. The fourth bullet could be done now, or it could be done at a later date, as long as it's included in the developer's agreement. Okay? I would think it would make sense to do that at a later date. Then obviously construct the sidewalk.
Mr. President, are you entertaining any questions?
No. At least not at this time. Now also within the developers agreement. Twenty-four. To the extent that traffic signals were required in the future, that would be a part of this. I mean, we've been talking about it.
We've talked about underground.
Yep.
Higher range for traffic.
Kevin? If, if the village decides that they want to put a traffic signal in somewhere, who pays for that typically? Not just the village, but any municipality?
Seen kind of a wide range with other communities in the area. Sometimes the development that comes in, say like a Walmart or Target or any of those types of things, they will have to pay a hundred percent of that cost. I've seen some other, some of the community's cost share into that. Typically, the DOT does not help fund those installation of the, of the signals themselves.
Now in this particular circumstance, by hearkening back to the traffic study, what it indicated was the traffic light is not, is not warranted to begin with. That the traffic light, if it's going to be warranted in the future, will be the result of the developments on the other side of the property.
Correct.
Not because of this particular development.
Obviously, it's.
Yeah, obviously, there's a degree of combination, but if you eliminate those, you'd also eliminate the need for the light.
Correct. The threshold is, is when the fill-out on the Derrick subdivision along with the Zappa parcel, when those are actually fully developed out, that puts you over the threshold where, you know, you would need to reanalyze that and more than likely have to put signals in just because of the, the delay times that you're going to start seeing in some of the lanes and things.
But that could have happened anyway? I'm, I'm asking the question. I'm not trying to lead the witness here.
There's, that's kind of why we put in the study itself, you know, we would have to look at that, you know, roughly in about a ten-year period, just reanalyze that and see, you know, if the development is coming forth and if everything is starting to fill out. Right now, it's not warranted, but ten years, more than likely, it's going to have to be because of the, uh, the traffic that's going to be generated from those developments up on the east end.
So then it would seem like at, at least some portion of that should be a part of the.
Yep.
Part of the development.
I think that's a fair assumption, yes.
What kind of cost splits have you seen?
Typically, what we've seen, you know, for installation of those, you're looking at around a hundred thousand dollars.
That's the cost? We're talking about the cost splits between?
That, there's a lot of variation on, I mean, there could be, some of it could be, you know, basically prorated based on what the existing traffic is going through on thirty-five, you know, what, what's going to be generated off of the grocery store. Potentially, some of those costs could be allocated towards maybe the Zappa parcel down the road. You would have to pay some of those costs. You know, there's, there's a wide ver- variety up there of how things are.
Is that type of project a set, would that fall under our assessment?
I have, I have not, yeah, I haven't seen anything in your assessment policy that deals with, um, traffic signals, infrastructure requirements. So it's.
Well, the, the reason I'm raising the issue is, I mean, in, in this whole thing, I mean, obviously, we've, we've had, you know, now six public hearings and a number of meetings on this topic in, in an effort to try and identify both concerns as well as, as well as trying to be fair to everybody concerned here, and that also includes being fair to the developer. In this particular instance, the reason for the light is not solely because of the development. If that was a swamp to the right, we wouldn't be worried about light.
Right.
Now, will there be some contributing factor to that going forward?
Yes.
There might be, okay. So, um, would it then seem appropriate to say that in the future, that if and when the, the village determines that a, a light is, a stoplight is necessary, the developer would pay, you know, not more than twenty-five percent of that price?
He will ultimately have to pay a certain dollar amount just because of the under, the underground conduits and things. Ballpark number, what we typically see is around ten thousand dollars for those. So, I mean, he will be paying a portion of that. The village could see where they want to have.
When you say a hundred, when you get, when you threw out the number a hundred thousand before, that's for the whole project?
Yes.
Typically, the cost put in?
Yep, yep. Signals, underground conduits, the pole boxes, the wiring and all those.
What we, what we had included before was your report which says, okay, we'd include that, but we wouldn't make them do it right now because there's no need to do that.
Right.
But we'd include it in the developers agreement such that, you know, pulling the wire across the underground would be his at the time, whoever owns it, whoever owns the development at that time.
Correct.
So that's part of the cost. Then you got, so now the wire's there. So then you got the cost of the pole itself, I guess, and the light.
Excuse me, we're talking about conduit, not wire. Two different things.
Yeah, you would, what we had in there is, the underground conduit was just, you know, PVC application with the pole boxes. Everything would be installed and then if they are installed right now, then at a later date when the signals would come in, then you could run the wiring from one pole box to the other to connect.
Or you could do it then.
Yes.
Either, either way, I mean, it doesn't really make any difference.
Doesn't, doesn't really matter, right?
Okay, because the developer's going to pay for that cost anyway.
So it's, a lot of it comes down to what the village, um,
Pardon?
thinks, a lot of it comes down to what the village sees, um, what the developer should pay as part of those traffic signals. Again, it's, I've seen it all, all over the board. So unfortunately, sometimes it's just the individual that comes in, the one development that puts them over the threshold, they, they end up paying for that cost. But it could be a certain percentage too.
Did the village pick up a hundred percent of the cost of the light at Monroe and?
That one was funded by the DOT, but they've gotten more restrictive. Not as many dollars that are out there anymore and they're.
That was a hundred percent by DOT?
It might have been eighty-twenty split, so it would have been eighty percent to DOT and twenty percent of the local funds. I would have to, have to check into that, but.
So if we were to, I'm looking at your, your previous bullet.
The state didn't require those to be laid bef- during this project. They just suggested it, the underground, so that it was ready?
Yeah.
Or did they require?
They didn't re- suggested it is what, as part of the TIA, that it would be done. At this time and again, you know, there's flexibility. I mean, the developers agreement, they could be installed at a later date, that is.
So in order to make it simple, one easy way to do it, we just say, you know, take your previous bullet number four, which is install the conduit. We were talking about before, delaying that until it was, until the light was warranted. Easier way to do that would just be take the entire cost of whatever it's going to be in the future and twenty-five percent of that cost.
Yeah, you could look at that.
How did we arrive at the twenty-five percent?
Pardon?
Had we arrived at twenty-five percent, is it arbitrary?
It's, I'm just throwing it out right now.
Yeah, it's just a number. A lot of it comes down.
If any.
Well, I would have to question what percentage of the need for the traffic light was the responsibility or the cause of the grocery store, which may very well have been negligible compared to the increased traffic just caused by increased development.
And it's, it's a fair question. My, my twenty-five percent is a stalking horse.
The reason I ask the question about who paid for the traffic light at Monroe is I doubt very much that, uh, it wasn't North Point at the time, but we'll use North Point because that's what's there now. That up, that represented twenty-five percent of the corner. And I doubt very much that the traffic light need was because of increased traffic at the restaurant. And so I would have to ask the question, uh, do we at this time want to come up with a percentage based on anticipated need, assuming the grocery store will be such a booming success that it will bring in all this additional traffic?
I was trying to get a point of.
Those numbers are in the TIA.
What numbers?
The number, you know, that would give you those percentages, what it, what it would be without the, the grocery store and with the grocery store. It's, it's there.
Yes, and those are.
You could get those ratios if you wanted to get.
But those are estimates at this time. And what I'm suggesting, if we're talking about ten years down, down the road, let's see how much of the gross, how much of the responsibility for the increase at, in ten years is due to the grocery store. And not just increase in development.
So what do you say? So what was it, what would the language somewhat read in the developers agreement?
I hadn't anticipated a need to come up with that technical language at this time.
Or is there kind of like an implied that at the, you know, that at that time, it would be expected that the developer would be contributing some percent?
It sounds good to me.
That's probably the fairest way to do it. Obviously, somebody would have to do some analysis, but that's probably the fairest way to do it and that way it would get in the conditions permit right now.
I mean, do you want to set then like a minimum?
I'd say I don't want to set a minimum. I agree with, with what Joe and I have been saying. You have to look at it ten years down the road. Did the business increase? By what percentage did the business increase that necessitated a, a traffic light?
If you go back to the March seventh meeting, two thousand and seven, when asked about a traffic signal or improvements to that corner, Mr. Re- Mr. Hanson replied that there would be absolutely no cost to the village of North Hudson for any station lane or thirty-five adjustments.
One hour, twenty-four minutes into the meeting, if you want the time to go back and research it.
Thank you.
And then at one thirty, one hour, thirty minutes into it, he agreed to basically pay for it.
And we seem to be forgetting that.
No, we're not forgetting that, I assure you. All right. But we're also trying to deal with this issue equitably. Do you have any suggestions?
Only suggestion I'd have is if you do, at the time a traffic light comes in, you do a study and you generate how much traffic is coming from certain spot, use that figure.
Yeah, I mean, you could put counters out there and see what's coming into the grocery store and then what's, you know, from that driveway to the west, what, you know, how much volume's going beyond. I mean, there's things you can do to figure out exactly how much traffic he's going to be generating at ten years down the road to get a, a real number.
And you can do that.
Yeah, there's, you could put some counters in, traffic counters. There is that flexibility there.
I believe when we did this TIA study that we had two traffic counters installed, but one of them was not functioning properly.
Correct.
Um, I've been just sort of scratching down some notes here to try to help with putting a formula together, if you would, but, um, I think what we need to start out with is perform an accurate traffic count prior to the store going in, probably for a longer period of time, so that we can look at what we've currently got after the store, if approved, is put in, rerun this entire report. If it's gone up fifty percent, thirty percent, seventy percent, I think it would give us some type of a basis to go on, but I don't know how you would put that into some type of a, uh, a contractor's proposal.
Mr. Mayor, Doctor, if the president on this suggests some language, I think that may address what we're struggling here with, and that would be language that at the time of installation of the lights, uh, this property shall be subject to an assessment for benefits based on reasonable engineer allocation, something like that.
Thank you.
And then who would pick up the rest?
Could be the other developers, as you mentioned. Because it is not, it is not solely this development that is generating the need for a light. Okay, it's the fact that people are moving into that area.
Larry, who would that be? The other developers?
Well, Gary Zappa would be one. Potentially Derrick?
I would think the bank would be assessed partially.
Why would the bank be assessed if they've been there already and they're fine the way it is?
What you're looking for is who's contributing to the, to the need. Would the grocery store be potentially? Yes, it could be. Might the Zappa development be contributing? Absolutely. You know, with the expansion of the Derrick? Absolutely. I mean, we already determined that, we already said, if it wasn't there, if those developments weren't there, we wouldn't even, we wouldn't even be talking about the light.
Right.
Did you, uh, did you catch that language? Okay, you got that, okay. Okay. All right. All right, I think we have addressed everything from, uh, trees and sidewalks to streetlights to roads and dumpsters and a whole variety of other things. Are there any other conditional use requirements that any of the other board members would want to see included? No? Okay. All right. With that, then, at least for purposes of discussion, I will make the motion to let the board approve the recommendation of the plan commission to approve the conditional use permit for Dean Hanson to construct and operate a grocery store on Lot one oh five, Summers Landing Sixth Edition, with the following conditions and contingencies, which would be the now twenty-four, which are so listed.
Do we have a grocery store?
Replicable company that's actually going to go into that place?
I'll second.
Well, the conditional use for, permit is for a grocery store, so it can only be a grocery store.
If he builds a building and no grocery store comes in, is he going to lose the empty building or is he going to apply for a different permit?
I'll ask you to, can you respond to that?
I'm not sure if that's an appropriate question to, to be.
Are you kidding?
You want to build a grocery store, but you don't have anybody to furnish the groceries into the store at this point?
Before we can build a grocery store, you need a conditional use permit with all the conditions.
Would I be correct in assuming that you do have a perspective? Two of them, okay?
Who would that be?
I mean, I'd like to have the record, who would that be?
For competitive purposes, I bet that's not an appropriate question to be put at this time.
Would you?
I just don't want to get a dog tracker.
All right. And our attorney concurs with that opinion as well. All right. Is there a second?
I did second it, Larry.
You did, okay. Discussion?
Well, I as usual have some comments and they haven't changed, but I want to reiterate them. And, and it's essentially this, when we saw that. them. And it's essentially this, when we saw that, when we saw the original plan and changed that area from C two to C three, it was based, my view, on the plan that Dean presented to the board. And a couple of things have changed from that plan. The first one, in my mind, is really detrimental to the, to the area, is, original plan had two accesses into that grocery store. And I happen to think, in my, my opinion, in most grocery stores that I've seen, you need two. Certainly have them up on the hill, and any large grocery store that I've seen generally has two of them. And again, that's an opinion, but that's my observation. I would not have, I personally would not have approved going to C three on that particular plan if it only had one access going through station circle. I would not have. Since that time, we've had, the building now is ten percent larger, wasn't, it was roughly thirty thousand square feet, now it's roughly thirty-three thousand square feet, I believe. And the access along Highway thirty-five, which is, in my view, the most important one, has now been eliminated. So we now have a thirty, we have a ten percent larger grocery store on some property, and to a certain extent, I've used this comment before, it's, it's like a lot of commercial property is used, it's shoehorned into that particular area. And I do know that we have less parking space on there now as originally planned. So that also is another change. But by and large, why I object to the project right now is, is because of the Highway thirty-five access is not there. So that's where I stand. It just does not seem to me that that's an acceptable site or an acceptable plan for a grocery store. Period.
Okay. All right. Other comments? I think the other side of that equation, and I certainly don't disagree with anything Joe has said, but at the kind of, the end of the day, it's, do you want a grocery store in North Hudson or not? And if we don't, we don't do it on this side, it's never going to happen, ever. Because there is no other place.
Yeah. The only other thing I would...
And it's not going to be a perfect situation. But I think we've certainly tried to mitigate, if not eliminate, almost every objection. That's my personal view. How other board members feel, I have no idea. So, anyone else?
Larry, I think it's important to focus on a building, a commercial building being there rather than a grocery store. I think everybody understands my concern with the thirty-five access. I, if, if the building, I have to look at the structure, not as a grocery store, but as a permanent commercial site, to increase the commercial activity and remove one of the accesses, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I believe on the other side of the road, there was the need to put in the access off thirty-five. And you can kind of visualize what that would be like without having that access getting to the bank or Mama Maria's. I think it would be detrimental to the, to the success of any business in there, having just one access. And above and beyond that, I, it just, it had, you know, this council exists for the interest of everybody, and I just think in the long run, we're accommodating something, a need for something we think we need, which would be nice to have. But I think it'll be down the line, it'll be another item that we're going to regret doing. It's going to come back and haunt the village.
In what respect?
You're, you're going to, again, if you look at it as a commercial site, what if it has to be divided up into other areas and you have just one access to it? It's not a very practical way. I don't know many commercial projects that have just one access to them.
But what other commercial property could you think of, Mark, that would have more traffic?
I beg your pardon?
Any other commercial use would have less traffic?
Gas station.
It's hard to say what could be. That, that all depends. It all depends. If the traffic isn't very high for this, it might be something else. The only value judgment I'm making on it is just comparing the other side of the road that has an access and landline, and, and, and doing something differently, increasing the use of the property, and then limiting the access to it. And it also frightens me a little bit when we get in these spots. I've seen it before, where all of a sudden, we're making a decision to accommodate a lot of different feelings out there. And I, I really think, in this particular case, and I don't care what the state says, it'll, to say it'll never be anything else, I think is not accurate. Things change. These are man-made laws. I don't care what they say down there. And I, I think we're shortchanging ourselves, the store, certainly the neighbors around there. But it's going to be a tough spot to turn in there, offer everybody to go into one spot.
I anticipate someday that we will get it.
Well, I, I don't, until we get that, I don't think it's, I, I agree with Joe on this particular matter. I, I think we're not giving it a good chance, and it'll just fall by the wayside. I don't know who's going to make the effort to do it.
Okay. Others?
I, I find the whole thing ironic with their safety concern, because going into Tom, going into Freedom Store, coming from the north, is, is, there's an accident waiting to happen just about every afternoon. There's no bypass lane. They don't care about that. I, I find the whole DOT thing to be just a bureaucratic nightmare myself. But that's another story. But I've also been part of decisions that, and I've seen things up here in North Hudson, that I just, I don't want to be part of one that's kind of a, in my opinion, not a full-fledged attempt to have a decent business district. It needs another access, in my opinion. And I would have guessed somewhere along the way, somebody would have had the imagination or the resources to get that.
Okay. Others? All right. Seeing then, with, we'll vote. We'll do a roll call vote. The motion is to approve the conditional use permit, so yes would indicate yes, and no would indicate no conditional use permit. So we'll start on this end?
Yes.
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Larry, yes?
Yes.
No. No.
Okay. Motion passed, five to two. Item number six on the developer's agreement, I'd make a motion to authorize the village attorney to initiate a draft of the developer's agreement. Obviously, we're not going to write one tonight or approve one.
I'll second.
Okay. Item number seven, Pepper Fest Temporary Class B Fermented Malt Beverage. Oh, I'm sorry. All favor of the motion to authorize the village attorney to initiate a draft for a developer's agreement between Hanson Development and the Village of North Hudson, signify by saying aye. All opposed?
No.
Same sign? Okay. Item number seven. Pepper Fest Temporary Class B Fermented Malt Beverage. Standard for this time of year, I'll make a motion to approve the North Hudson Pepper Festival, Inc., Temporary Class B Picnic License for Serving Fermented Malt Beverages for a period starting on August fourteen, two thousand and eight, through August eighteen, two thousand and eight, as recommended by the village administrator.
Second.
Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. There are no plan commission recommendations, right? I didn't miss any, did I? Okay. And there's no one here from the plan commission, so we'll move on to finance. All right. I'd make a motion to approve the June two thousand and eight nonrecurring claims totaling thirty-three thousand, five hundred and four dollars and eighteen cents, as recommended by the finance committee. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Comments or questions? Seeing then, we'll do a roll call vote. Start on this end again. Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mark?
Public Works?
I chaired the last meeting, Public Works, while filling in a little at Joe's request. We need a request for crack filling and seal coating bids. And I think we had a, Public Works had made a recommendation to approve the, the bid of Farnor Asphalt, Farnor Asphalt Sealers to do the hot patch and crack filling, seal coating that we traditionally do each year for a total cost not of twenty-four thousand, forty-two dollars. So I guess I'll be, I'll make a motion to approve their bid for, for those items.
Okay, there's been a motion, and you're dealing with item C, ten C, Mark?
Yeah, ten C. I'm sorry, I jumped past the crosswalk.
That's fine, that's fine.
Was this the company that's done the seal coating and pass?
Um, no. But you know, I don't know if it's an offshoot of them or not, but no.
All right, we, I just want to make sure I understand the dollars involved here. They're going to do, they'll do the crack fill the streets listed?
Yes, on your proposal.
Okay. And they will do the hot patch, as we've requested, for a total of twenty-four thousand?
Yes, these are gone over with the Public Works superintendent.
Okay. And we'll take, and the budget for that was fifteen thousand?
The budget for, for both those items was seven. And because we have so much to do and the cost has increased, we now have something that approaches twenty-four thousand dollars. We had twenty-two thousand dollars budgeted for, for basically all of the road maintenance, which include crack filling, hot patching, and then seal coating. And seal coating was the largest amount. But we, we definitely got to...
So between those two, you had twenty-nine thousand?
If you add all three of them up, you had twenty-two thousand dollars budgeted.
Okay.
And we've got a twenty-four thousand dollar bid to just do two of them. So Public Works has decided, let's not do any seal coating this year. We definitely got to do this hot patching and crack filling, because that's all we have budgeted. Now, if somebody wants to come up and, and I don't know, did we have any bids for seal coating?
You're losing me somewhere. I'm not quite sure where you're at.
On the June seventeenth, two thousand and eight, right down here at the bottom.
Yeah. But we had a twenty-two thousand dollar budget.
Right.
Crack filling, hot patching, seal coating.
Right.
Best guess estimate, hopefully.
Yep.
Basically, it's twenty-two thousand dollars for street maintenance.
That's what we said.
And we're at twenty-four thousand, so we're two thousand over budget.
Yeah. But we didn't get any seal coating done.
Well, we're, obviously, these things need to be done more than the others.
That's my point.
And we're still over by two thousand. It's fairly typical. It's whatever we can get, you know, wherever the dollars go the farthest for us in any particular year.
Absolutely. It's the same problem every township is facing. Sixty percent of the entire budget's roads.
Yeah.
So they can only spend so much, so they just, with the increase in costs of asphalt, et cetera, they just keep dialing back the amount of roads they're going to fix?
Mm-hmm.
They have no choice. Okay. Can the other two thousand be accommodated within the budget, Public Works?
I think it was, yeah. The superintendent looked at that, and we talked about that, and he said he was going to find it somewhere in there.
Okay.
Probably be the street sweeping in front of your guys' houses.
All right.
That's fine.
Okay.
Well, with the new pavement, they don't need...
Yeah. And then we need a, oh, we, I have, we have, I moved to approve that. Was there a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. You have the motion, Colleen has the second, to approve the collective bids from Farnor.
Mm-hmm.
Farnor Asphalt.
Have we gotten any competitive bids, or are they the only one that bid on that?
Um, you know, I, I don't recall offhand, oh, what Mark said, if somebody is no longer doing it, or if these guys are an offshoot of the guys that used to do it for years, but there's not a whole lot of companies that, that do this. It's usually a pretty big group, and they go all around the state. And, you know, we've done it for so many years, he knows who to call and get. And if, if there doesn't happen to be anybody out there, it's due to market conditions, not to any negligence on our part. And we really don't want to wait on this sort of thing.
Do they give you a linear footage number? Like, you know, it says all the roads?
Sure. Yeah, they'll measure it off. They go look and, and take a look and then give an estimate on what they have to do. It's pretty standard stuff.
Yeah. And we mark them. I think they're marked out there with some spray paint or something. So they go around and...
In fact, they're fifteen...
Tabulate that.
There's quite a list of all the, the streets that are going to receive. Yeah, no, I see all that. I was just looking. And, you know, it doesn't say, like, you're looking at Fox Tree Lane, twenty-one hundred dollars. Oh, right. And Gala had, you know, seventy, seventy-eight dollars. And, you know, is that, you know, ten feet versus five hundred feet?
I have no idea.
No idea? Okay.
Don't really care.
I don't really want to learn about seal or crack filling tonight, but... Well, what I see here is locations and prices, and the only thing it does, it, well, it does list exactly, like Fox Tree Lane North, North End Road North to Fourth Street, two thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Right. It's spelled out, you know, we can look at, okay, so Fox Tree Lane's listing is two thousand bucks. Oh, I understand that. What I was looking for is like, so if a person was to get a competitive bid, and you knew you had five thousand feet, is that a competitive bid? Ah, sure. You know, just, just so that I know that we're spending our residents money properly, not knowing, I'm sure that you've done the research on it, but...
They didn't look high to anybody who was reviewing the bids. And the superintendent had seen enough of them, if they looked out of line, would have talked about it.
So there's something that Mark Ekblad goes out with these guys and...
Sure. Yeah. Kevin, are you involved? You help? You, you don't do any of that? At the risk of sounding cavalier, it's a pretty routine item. I, I, it's so routine, I don't know that much about it anymore. I mean, it just gets done every year.
I think the only question was, was there a bid?
I don't recall why there wasn't this year. There's never, there's never really more than two that I can recall.
I know in years past, we get, we have gotten at least two bids on this. I know last year it was increased quite a bit. It is surprising to see it as high as it is, but then, you know, that could be a combination of factors, the condition of our roads, and...
Oh, asphalt's to the roof.
Oil.
Asphalt's to the roof. Yeah, I know that. Okay. All right, well, we have a motion to approve the bid... Alright, well, we have a motion to approve the bid from Farner Asphalt in a second. Are there any other questions for Joe or Mark? If not, we'll do a roll call vote and start again on this end. Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And Larry, yes.
Then we also need to, or would like to approve Farner Asphalt Sealers' bid to paint the crosswalk, 20 intersections in the village, at a cost not to exceed $2,358. Again, this is a routine item done annually.
Is that your motion?
My motion, I would like to move to accept Farner's Asphalt Sealers' bid to paint the crosswalks of $2,358, or not to exceed $2,358.
I'll second.
Note that the budget for this is $2,500, so that's within budget.
Okay.
In fact, there's a thousand of the thousand already, of the 2,000. Alright, any questions on that? If not, suspending once, we'll also do a roll call vote again. Sandra? Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And Larry, yes.
Um, Public Works, good, that's the end of that.
Okay, moving on, Public Safety.
At the last Public Safety Committee meeting, Judge Ben Welpat was present to talk to us about Teen Court. The chief is here, and between the two of us, we will answer any questions that you have about this. You'll also notice that at your table, when you got here this evening, you saw an issue statement. This issue statement came from the judge, was written by him at our request, but you'll notice in the minutes for Teen Court, the recommendation is simply to discuss the request for a $1,000 donation to Youth Court, or to at least, just so we can discuss it for tonight, so that you're aware of what the program is, and also consider, and I said that carefully, consider budgeting $1,000 for 2009. So I'd ask Mark, if you want to step up to the microphone, perhaps we could, between the two of us, answer some questions that you might have about Teen Court, and, excuse me, it's actually Youth Court, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah, this is actually a misnomer to call a Teen Court. One time it was Teen Court, but now they have some children who are coming before this court, who are not teens. So the name has been changed to the Youth Court because of that. In a synopsis, and I just got this issue statement this evening, I was basing my comments strictly off the time that we spent with the judge and the minutes that you have in front of you from Public Safety. It's a...we have a court made up of youth, and most of the youth on the court had come before that court themselves, and it builds a sensitivity to, I will use my own term, how to behave in society. So I will now entertain, Mark and I will entertain any questions that you have about it, and Mark, if you have any comments that you'd like to make too, because it was your motion that we just discussed it. Throw it out at you two.
How many places is the so-called Teen Court, Youth Court, operating?
Judge Welpat brought this before the committee. I'm not aware of how many other municipalities have that.
Well, I noticed in the information, it indicated that some are private.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just wondering if you were aware of any others?
I am not. Because it is a municipal court-driven process, basically, and just, I guess, to supplement what George had said, a person commits an ordinance violation, the police department cites that person. In order to get into the Youth Court program, you have to come into court and plead guilty to that violation. Basically, Youth Court then is just a sentencing guideline. They say, in lieu of paying a $100 fine, or in lieu of doing community service, you will go to Teen or to Youth Court, and the Youth Court will issue a sentence, and that sentence could be anywhere from, you know, spending a lot of time with a community service project that is specific to a certain thing, or it may be that they will donate two hours of their time to their family home to do projects. I mean, it really, it's up to the youth in that particular situation to make that decision. If the youth does not go to the Youth Court, or if the violator doesn't go to the Youth Court, they're then brought back into Municipal Court, and the fines and sentencing is done by the judge. But it's an opportunity for them to go and have a peer review, and have their peers give them the sentence. And so I'm not sure what other communities use it. I know it's been going on in Hudson for, I believe it was about a year that it's been going. It started off with volunteer youth, and now what happens is, once you've gone to Youth Court as a quote-unquote defendant, you then become a juror. So the next defendant that comes in, you have a peer review, and you give them what you believe the sentence should be. So it is a good process. According to the municipal judge, there haven't been a lot of, I guess, what you would call recidivism. They don't have the same people going through the Youth Court, and I don't know if that's because of the process where maybe the judge says, we've already done the Youth Court thing with you, it hasn't worked, we're now just going to sentence you here. He didn't really discuss that at the meeting.
The recommendation was to just consider it for the 2009 budget, correct?
I'll move to deny it.
Well, there's already...there's a motion, the second on the floor, right?
Is there?
No.
I thought we had...
We're just discussing.
We're just discussing.
I will make a motion, though.
Alright, so what is your motion, Mark?
I motion to not contribute $1,000 to Teen Court.
Is there a second?
Do we need a motion to not do something?
Well, if it's been brought before as somewhat of a request, we have to discuss it.
If there's an approval requested, you can either say yes, no, or table.
To a certain extent, aren't we talking about doing this at budgeting time anyway? I mean, the final approval for this is going to see if we want to do it and...
Absolutely.
Put it in the budget.
Well, let's...
So all we're saying tonight is that we will consider it at budget time. That was all I think, right?
Right, but I'm still making the motion, because we have enough to consider, and as far as I'm concerned, this is a pretty easy one to get off the table. Let's take care of it now, so we don't have to...if you want to talk about it later or study it, I mean, it sounds like another more...what's that one, Povet show or something? Teen Court, more pampering of the misfits and miscreants.
Is there a second to Mark's motion? Otherwise, the motion will die for lack of a second. Seeing no second, the motion dies. Alright, are there any other motions?
Well, then I'll move to approve it.
Okay.
My God, we're going to...no wonder we don't get anything then. We're going to sit on this, and it'll come up at the budget meeting, and we're going to talk about it one more time.
I'll second your motion, Mark.
No, I take that back. I'm not moving to approve it.
Your way.
I'm not moving to approve it. Do something with it. Jeez.
Think we're trying to.
Well... I think we need to do a little research on it. I'll move that we approve future discussion of Teen Court.
Just table it.
Or we could table it, yeah. Why would you then? Doesn't matter to me.
Yeah.
You know, bottom line, we have several months to determine this and research what it's about.
Realize how many lives might be hanging in the balance, Jim?
What's that, Mark?
You have to look at it as you would any other request. $1,000 for us is not an insignificant request. So we either say no categorically, no, or we'll consider it at budget time. You can say absolutely yes, we'll do it right now, no, we're absolutely not going to do it, or, you know, we'll just simply consider it at budget time, so...
In which case, you don't need any motion whatsoever, because all the objective was was just to bring it up for discussion and let...and awareness, if nothing else.
Can we just do it?
Table it, yeah.
Table what?
Well, the problem is, the agenda, the agenda as published states, Teen Court donation, approval requested. So it's asking for an action? So you can either say yes, no, or table.
Uh, did anyone say anything to the question?
And Jim's motion, I think, was to table.
Well, yeah, I'll just move that we table it.
I'll second.
And Sandra says the same thing. Okay. Robert's rules shouldn't be that hard. Okay. All favor of tabling the motion until the normal budget process, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Yeah.
I would hope that the next topic, which is to sell some vehicles, is a little bit easier. You want to sell three vehicles, and you have an issue statement in front of you, very simply put, Hudson Chrysler has agreed to give us $5,000 for three vehicles, a Ford Bronco, Dodge Intrepid, and the blue 2001 Ford Police Interceptor. Mark, do you think we need any more information than what is presented here?
The only other thing, and it's before you, but I guess for the listening audience and the public in the room, is that we did put it out to all, to three of the local dealerships, and Hudson Chrysler happened to be the top bid.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's useful.
So you'll see the recommendation, suggested motion, and I will make the motion, and we'll split it up into two parts. I'll move that we approve the sale of the Ford Bronco, the Dodge Intrepid, the 2001 Ford Police Interceptor, the blue one, to Hudson Chrysler for the trade-in value of $5,000 toward the purchase of a newer used vehicle for use by the North Hudson Police Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sale of an asset, so I don't think it requires...we'll do a roll call vote since it's a sale of assets. Start up here.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Joe?
Yep.
George?
Yep.
Larry, yes. Okay. Sold is the highest bidder.
Now, part of the motion that you just approved was $5,000 toward the purchase of a newer used vehicle. So the second motion would be to authorize the Chief of Police to purchase a newer used vehicle from Hudson Chrysler at a price not to exceed $15,000. That $15,000 also includes outfitting that used car to police specifications.
You said it does include?
Yes.
Is that your motion?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay. Questions? If not, we'll do a roll call vote again. Sandra? Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Joe?
Yep.
George?
Yes.
Larry, yes.
Okay. Larry, would you like to discuss what the Finance Committee came up with regarding the next item on the agenda, that is, the building?
The request was made that the village rent additional space from a proposed addition to the current facility that we lease. And after discussing that, the Finance Committee recommendation was not to lease any additional space, okay? There had been a contingency offer for that metal building, which the village purchased some time ago, still owns. Zappa Development had indicated that they would buy it if we added on to the structure that's there. So presumably, that contingent offer is now off the table, and so we have authorized the Chief of Police to solicit the highest offer for that building. It happens to be made out of steel, and it's in good shape. So we're not going to be...we didn't feel that there was just simply a need to increase the lease cost for the Public Works Building. So it was the recommendation of the Finance Committee not to amend the building lease to include any additional space. And right now, there is no need for the, within the police department, for additional space. So...
Reiterate, no need for what?
With the, having vacated, having sold those last three cars.
Okay.
I mean, we had, the police department had a degree, has to maintain a secure area.
Right, right.
Okay. Having now sold, or having now gotten approval to sell those three cars, space is not an issue at all for the police department, okay? And there was no, we see no compelling reason to add on to and increase the lease cost.
Okay. Would, now, you're at Finance, right, George?
Yes.
So the space needs are okay?
For PD?
Yeah.
Yes.
What changed between our Public Safety meeting and...what I'm getting at is, I don't mind the decision not to get more lease space, it's fine, but is that...I was under the impression we needed some space, does that preclude us from looking for a different form of space somewhere? Is it this Finance Committee saying no to any additional space, period?
The only request we got was primarily related to the PD.
Yes.
And PD said their issue went away, and so there is no compelling reason. So without a reason, we're not going to have a lease.
I understand, but it wasn't that long ago, we just had a meeting at Public Safety where there was a need. That's why I was wondering what changed.
I'm assuming the sale of three cars.
Okay, alright. That's just fine. I'm not just saying, that's great that we don't, I was just wondering if what...
I haven't visited our storage unit that's outside of the village, and there is considerable space in there right now, so there hasn't been a change since Public Safety.
That's fine, okay.
And I think at Finance, I was at the Finance Committee meeting and asked them, or was asked some questions, and I think with the cost-benefit analysis that was done, obviously, there's a reason why I would prefer to have it in the village and have those types of locations closer, but weighing those costs, it wasn't going to...and with the sale of the vehicles giving us much more space where we have a unit...
Something popped up in North Hudson, we could still keep our eyes open for a similar financial arrangement, but try to get these, this facility within our boundaries, correct? Okay.
We discussed that, and it kind of depends a little bit. I mean, there are some advantages to having a remote but secured storage.
That's fine, I don't want to beat it to that. I was just surprised how it took a complete flip from two weeks ago.
Okay, okay. Since this was an action item on the agenda, I would make a motion to not amend, or I'd make a motion, I'll do it in a positive, make a motion to retain the current lease for the Public Works Building.
Okay, that's a second. Yeah.
Okay. Any other further comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And I abstain there.
Pardon?
I'll abstain from the vote, please.
There was a second part to the recommended motion, and that was, it involved selling the, I want to make sure I get the pronunciation right, the Curveco Steel Structure. We would still like to bring that before the board, and you'll see that's item E, sale of police department's storage shed, and what the Finance Committee recommended was that we authorize the chief to begin, what was the exact motion that we made then? Do you have it?
Soliciting bids, not to, like we did with the cars.
Okay.
eBay.
And that eBay is exactly what we had discussed, and we threw in not only eBay, but Craigslist, but the first thing we're going to do is to... But the first thing we're going to do is to do it through soliciting bids. Look for, but the Chief is going to see what the value of that is currently. It may be.
Might pay for an ad.
Okay. We're just throwing it out for discussion right now, and then we'll make a motion.
I think Mark brought up at Finance that we have to make a determination if eBay is to be involved or not, because if you make that commitment, and somebody else makes a bid on it, you're limited to sell it to the eBay bidder, because it's a contract you've entered into.
I think, let's see, the Finance Committee's recommendation was to research and to recommend an appropriate method of disposal. Because we don't want to own this thing. So those are, those are the two actions. Okay.
It was also stated that time is not of the essence with this particular topic, so it'll come back before us again next month, at which time Mark will be able to share with us what he found out, what's the value of it, and what can we expect to get for it.
Is there a motion? Somebody?
That sounded good, the one that you just rambled after, Larry, if you want to make that a motion.
All right, consider that done.
I'll second it.
Did you get that, Kathy?
Yeah.
Okay. Getting good capturing motions before they're. There is no second. Jim's got the second. All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
The last item from Public Safety is Amendment of Ordinance 18-146 dealing with peddlers. And it's quite a bit of detail here. Mark, I'll ask you to give us, give the Court here the synopsis version.
Basically, this change came from the, I guess, difficulty that we had with a previous application that came forward related to a peddler, canvasser, or a transient merchant in what category or what criteria is used to make a recommendation to the Board. And how much weight, if any, does the Police Department background have on that board decision? I asked the Village Attorney to come forward, or to try to give me some idea and some research on other municipalities that have similar ordinances, something that maybe has, I guess, for lack of a better word, more teeth, to being able to say yes or no for a specific purpose based on the background, reputation. Because our current ordinance basically says the appropriate investigation of the record and reputation of the applicant. Fairly broad in its scope. What does that mean? Which items can I use to make that determination? And so what the Committee looked at was an ordinance from, I believe it was Indiana, from a county Sheriff's Department down there that had specific language that basically gave the approval based on the background to the Chief to make to the Board. And less that approval, the application basically died there and didn't make it to a board level, saving some of the confusion that we've had in the past. It also spells out then what that approval consists of and what areas are looked at. If you look at the recommendation and suggestion, suggested motion, it says no license shall be approved by the Police Chief or his or her designee if it appears that the activity for which license is sought will be contrary to health, safety, welfare of the public, or in violation of any regulation, law, or ordinance applicable to such activity. So again, it spells out some of those areas that, that I or the person assigned by me to do the investigation would look at versus record and reputation, which again is somewhat subjective. It keeps in the current ordinance, the three-day timeframe in which the investigation will be conducted and presented back to the clerk, but basically says with the new language, approval from the Police Chief or his or her designee shall be received by the Board before any license is issued. So in other words, if the, if the Police Department or myself recommends denial, it basically does not make it to the Board level. And saves some confusion and some, you know, questions, because the, the purpose of that is in there is because when I run a criminal background investigation, I'm restricted by state law on what I can share from that information. And so it's difficult for me to stand up here and say, well, trust me, and this is, this is information that, that precludes this person from a license or a permit, when in fact I've already put that in the recommendation, and it, it just saves us from some headaches and getting into some possible liability issues or legal issues, questions that are going to be asked and to make sure that I don't have to answer one that is difficult or I may slip. Because I am human.
What was that?
Easy.
Can I interject one thing? I also looked at the same language that, and there was items that I wanted to address also in changing that ordinance. And so I guess I'm wondering, this isn't a ordinance, the way we approve an ordinance normally, it's usually typed up in, in that language. So I could take this language, add my language, get it reviewed by the attorney, and then it would come back to Board next month. If, if you're in agreement with what his language is.
So what you're saying is he has specific language he wanted, and he's brought it forward here tonight. You now have language that you want to add to this?
Not to his section, to the ordinance.
But to this particular ordinance?
That section, yeah. Because there was other things that it addressed that would help with us on the application side of it.
Okay. So what you'd like is a motion to table this. I don't want to approve, approve the ordinance, go through the posting process, and then turn around next month and do the whole thing all over again.
Right, and it's, it actually needs to be in an ordinance, given an ordinance number and come forward in that manner.
All right, well, then I would make a motion to table action on item 11F. Amendment to Ordinance 18-146. Until next meeting.
I will agree with that with a proviso, and that is that there would be, I want to make sure I get this right, that if any peddler, canvasser, or transient merchant, merchant permit comes before Gloria or Mark, that it be held off until after the ordinance is revised.
We have to follow our code book.
You have to, and that's in the code that you have to do it?
I think we have a response time.
Yeah, in the, in the ordinance, it does say that I must return my recommendation within three days, three business days, and that the clerk shall immediately put it on the agenda for the next board meeting.
Is this something like the siren goes off if the peddlers are out without a, nobody knows?
We get a lot of calls, to tell you the truth, yeah. Somebody comes knocking on your door offering you X, Y, or Z product, we get a lot of calls. And I, and I guess we, in past years, just to keep you up to date, we've had maybe a handful, if that, every year of applications. So if it, if it goes another month, I don't see a large issue. And again, it's, we really only had one that it's been questionable that we really had to determine, and I just want to avoid future problems.
No, it sounds like it's appropriate. Okay. Are we done? Public Welfare?
We did, we voted on table?
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't vote on, sorry. Motion is to table till the next meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, now moving on to Public Welfare.
This is just going to be a chair update, real briefly. We did have a meeting last month, but we're going to move the meat of that meeting to this upcoming month when we have a couple of more things in order. Dealing with waste management seems like it's very paralleling dealing with the Department of Transportation. You just don't get anywhere with these people, so I beat my head against the wall just, just too many times. I need to take a break and get back. Animal control, we will be adjusting, make a motion for Kathy Pounder's contract. And I'm going to be meeting with Sandra in regards to some web issues, so being the fact we've got a chance of getting out of here before nine, give me 10 minutes next month to cover all of the needs that Public Welfare has to cover. Thank you very much.
Mark, board?
Okay, mine's pretty much just a chair update, too. We're going to be putting in a new sign down at Brown's Beach with the rules. And Mark Ekblad is taking care of getting that sign. It'll be a metal sign. And then also, we're still going to be looking at a bike rack at the top of the stairs. You'll notice that the landscaping has begun around the Village Hall. The Building Management Committee is pretty much taking care of that. Just notice the new planters out front, and Becky O'Keefe is working on her master gardener, so she is taking care of the plants. And as far as the Pepperfest concrete slab, we didn't discuss it at our last meeting since we had no further information or updates on what they wanted or what was discussed.
All right. I'm assuming the landscaping of the Village Hall, I'm splitting it here, falls within the purview of the Building Management Committee at this stage?
Right.
Okay. All right. All right. So we've got a Pepperfest installation of concrete.
Last meeting, I volunteered to take a look at the spot with Wally where it goes.
Yep.
And we have three concrete benches that have been out in front of the hall for years. They were donated years ago. They sat on the sidewalk that used to run in front of the building for years. I thought where the sidewalk is running, it doesn't go anywhere, it's just going to be a section of concrete. It would be an appropriate spot to re, to put those benches back where they've always been.
Over here?
Right out in front of the hall. Where the sidewalk area goes doesn't seem to inhibit or influence any type of, any of the landscaping. I don't see it to be a structural drainage problem, so if the benches go there, it's a nice place to put some benches that have been there for years. That's my opinion. I would approve the installation of that concrete.
It needs to be 60 by 34 feet long? For three benches?
It isn't going to stick out that much.
Is this concrete slab any different than the one we talked about la, last month? Difference is now we're just going to put three benches on it?
Well, in the off-season.
Well, it's an excuse, I, I looked at it as, as, as if you're grasping for a reason or a reason not to do it. It's,
No, I mean, is that?
It's a reason, yeah.
My only question is, is this?
It's to.
Does it add to or subtract from the appearance of the building?
I don't think it's going to hurt at all, my personal opinion. And you put the chairs back where they were. It's kind of nice. Whoever donated them years ago, they belong back, in my opinion, where, where they should have been, and.
I'm asking the question legitimately. I have absolutely no taste.
I don't think it's going, I don't think it's going to be that much of a, I don't think it'll influence the looks that much of the landscaping, and if it accommodates the Pepperfest significantly.
Just for appearance, it's the building, some amount of grass or plantings, then the concrete slab, a little bit, a little bit more grass?
Yeah.
Then sidewalk.
Yeah, it could be, I, I'm not sure they could maybe landscape all the way out to the sidewalk, too, or make it into whatever, but. I don't think it'll be that obvious or strange or.
Question, would pavers be acceptable instead of concrete? Just a question.
As a surface, sure, yeah. As a surface, sure.
Was it going to be level enough or could be made level enough for the equipment that you guys are going to put there, or is that, your equipment can be leveled, I'm guessing, huh?
Right. People would like it to be better.
Cost.
It's less expensive, it's smoother, the pavers, you can, you know, the, the pavers would look nicer, and they serve the same function as concrete structure. It is a sound, but with the segmentation of it, if you got to imagine to light some equipment across it with some legs, things like that, it might be a problem, but ultimately, it wouldn't be that large an issue if, if pavers were necessary.
I'd say roughly half of it's going to be hidden by the memorial wall anyway.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't really see it as a huge deal.
Does anyone see this as objectionable?
I, I don't myself. I mean, I really do. If I thought it was going to be a, I, I think it's an accommodation. It's not necessary for the Village Hall, but I don't think it's enough of a drawback to what we've tried to achieve here to, to say no to it.
Okay.
I'm not partial to concrete out there. I think we got enough concrete, but that's just one guy talking.
All right, Jared entertained a motion then on this topic.
I'll move to approve the concrete sidewalk or slab as proposed by the Pepperfest.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Could you include in there the?
I would like to add that, well, I don't, because I don't, if they're in front of me, I would like to add in, in that motion that Wally, the Pepperfest, should maintain that. Cracks, breaks, starts looking crummy, you know?
This was in our.
Oh, six by 43 concrete. Six foot by 43 feet.
What was I going to add though, was a small drainage tank out there for our cookers, and they dump all of it. And then they'll be pumped by the sewer service. You know, we have a runoff out here that's.
Wally's got a hyperactive imagination. I think he's thinking about something entirely different. We'll talk about that some other time.
Okay. Well, we have a motion to let the Pepperfest install a concrete slab at their cost and maintain it in perpetuity. You got to remember that whichever comes first.
The motion includes that is a six by 43 foot slab. Is this open for discussion at this point? A question, how often does the Building Management Committee meet now that the remodeling, the construction is done? We don't. You don't? Correct. If an issue arises such as this, do they ever have a special meeting for dealing with landscaping issues, issues of this nature at all? We had not, because it was assumed all along then it was part of the plan that Becky O'Keefe would be doing the landscaping for the grounds around the Village Hall as part of her program. It was a donation of her time, and in fact, she even got a $1,500 donation, Mark?
I think that's. $250 grant.
$250 grant. Where'd the $1,500 come from? At this. The cost of the planters, yeah.
You know, obviously, it isn't going to interfere with the building. I don't see an issue with it, but there's been so much care and time and planning that's gone into every aspect of this building that I would like to see that enough people have looked at it that are more affected by it than I am to make sure it works right. The thing I see out there is there's a drain off the roof. It's going to create a pocket where the water can no longer get back to this wall, so any grass up against the building will die. Lot of little issues, you know, and that's what has got us to where we are right now, and I hate to have just a knee-jerk reaction, screw that all up.
As I understood, the purpose of the Building Management Committee, it was to manage the construction and renovation of this facility. Perhaps what you're asking, Jim, is very appropriate to consider that there be a Building Management Committee, a re, let's just say, a different kind of a Building Management Committee that is responsible for watching the management of this facility. And I'm not proposing that we do that tonight, but, and I hadn't even thought of that before, but that may be something that would be appropriate.
Well, I don't want to interfere with the building and this concrete slab, but real simply, if we put in a concrete slab and get it done and realize pavers would have been better, it's too late. So, you know, what are we to do right now? I, I don't have an answer. It's a simple issue, but this building has turned out just very nice. I want to keep it that way. I, I don't have an answer, it's a simple issue, but, uh, this building has turned out just very nice, and I wanna keep it that way.
But anyway, that's just, uh, for discussion.
Okay, any other comments regarding it?
I think a committee for ongoing maintenance of the building would be pretty superfluous.
Sort of like, sounds a lot like Public Works, doesn't it?
What, you're, you're saying Public Works is superfluous?
No, no. That a building management.
Yeah, I know. I know you're saying, Jim, but most of these, there aren't gonna be that terribly many issues that pop.
Probably not.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, all in favor of the motion to put in a concrete slab, since that's the motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign?
Nay.
I'd like to abstain.
Uh, can you do that?
Motion passed. Motion passed with one abstention and one no. Were you serious about the abstention?
Yes.
Okay, done. Same as you were.
Thank you.
I have the one to one.
Oh, I just had one other thing to the, um, Mark also took care of getting the POW MIA flag for the front memorial.
Okay. Okay, uh, last item on the agenda is some comments regarding the Hudson Joint Library project, I'll try to be just really brief. Uh, I think, as you know, the, several weeks ago, at least seems like several weeks ago, the issue was raised by one of the municipalities that's responsible for funding of the library, which said, you know, given the fast track they were on with this project, it would seem to make sense for the four municipalities involved with the funding, and who actually, in essence, provide all of the funding for the program, should be taking a much more of a leadership role in this whole proposition. Uh, so we met a couple of times, and we agreed that there's an awful lot of work that needs to get done between now, and if you work off the assumption that there's gonna be a, a referendum in November, you have to back up forty, at least forty-two days from, from that date. In order to have your, uh, every municipality involved here would have to have its budgets in, you know, in the paper and published sometime by the end of September. Which would then say our own budgeting process is now gonna need to get done by the end of August. Early part of, probably at the September meeting, we'd have to adopt a budget. I think it has been a very useful discussion in the context of, uh, dealing upfront with the issues, uh, related to ownership and capital and borrowing, and, and how would this, you know, how would the library get, uh, would it be managed going forward, et cetera? All of which are issues which, even if we don't, even if for whatever reason it was decided not to do this particular building, this particular governance model is still required, okay? So this is not, uh, work dedicated just to this particular proposition. Also in the process, it, uh, it became very apparent that I would say, um, most of the municipalities were, wanted more detail and, and wanted to get a lot more comfortable with respect to the projected operating costs associated with it. There has certainly been, uh, you know, a, a lot of favorable comment with respect to, it would be a great location, it's an outstanding building, it's large, it's got a great view, and, and all kinds of other positives. You know, the downside is, it also represents, uh, a rather large building, which is gonna carry with it large operating expenses. For sure, uh, most likely increased staffing. Even in the information that was presented by the library board before, uh, in their initials, now we're looking at going from like a hundred, from seventy thousand to a hundred and forty thousand, potentially, you know, more, here in the village. Plus the cost of borrowing dollars, uh, to, to cover our portion of the capital. And the only other thing that, you know, that it, there's been any number of other issues that have been, you know, brought to my attention and discussed at these sessions. One is that having, having now, you know, decided to pursue this option, we have precluded all others. Which is kind of unfortunate, uh, because at one of our meetings, uh, it was pointed out that City of Hudson was in the process of developing a recommendation with respect to buildings for the City of Hudson. And, uh, you know, it would be, I don't know how much land the City of Hudson has, uh, but, you know, their thought was, you know, theoretically, they could add on to that building and, and build, put in an additional twenty thousand square feet or, or whatever size would be appropriate for a library. And that cost per square foot would be significantly less than the property that's currently being considered. So there is a, a lot of discussions that, that goes on. We meet every Monday morning at six-thirty, which is about the only time that, uh, the four of us could agree or that we were available, because most of us have meetings at night. So we meet down at City Hall every Monday morning, six-thirty.
So they're not talking about any other type of buildings that might be available? Like the Denny Hector building, just throw something out, up for that old?
No, and that's kind of unfortunate, I mean, normally, in terms of looking at, uh, you know, decision-making, you, you create as many options as you can.
Yeah.
And then try to select which is the best option. Even if it's a compromise, so. I mean, the process is by no means done, that's for sure, but.
So you're, you're meeting every Monday?
We meet every Monday morning, six, six-thirty AM.
Monday is, I thought I saw an announcement.
Yeah. It's every Monday morning, six-thirty down at City Hall.
I'd like to make one of them.
Feel free.
It'll be a good one next Monday.
Don't sit at the table.
I heard that, I heard that.
I'll, uh, I know that that was very brief, and I probably left something out, but, so if anybody's got any other questions? It's all going, it's certainly been a very learning and informative process, that's for sure. We're hoping that, apparently, we're supposed to get some word even in terms of major donors, very soon. Alright, with that, there's nothing, uh, do you have any comments?
Do adjourn.
There is a motion, isn't there?
We don't wanna table this one?
Table you.
Meeting is adjourned, it's eight fifty-nine.